Barazza?
Here.
Lancy?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Piper?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Chanset?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malay? Uwer? Serone?
Here.
Vogelsinger? Three absent.
Okay. I recognize we do have a quorum on Siggy Duck Business. The next item is items to be removed, added, or changed.
None.
Then moving on to item number three, matters from the public. These are for items that are not on the agenda. And this is a heads up for the next item on strategic action. We actually are going to have a public comment portion for that. Should we have anybody that wanted to address the council? Okay. All right, moving on then to tonight's matters. Our discussion of the 2024-2028 Strategic Action Plan. This is an update. Thanks.
So, thank you all for being here. The way tonight's going to work is first thing first, just going to give a brief overview of what we're going to do, how we're going to do it. Then we're going to jump into a public comment session. Section, anyone who has anything they want to share kind of before we start the conversation to inform it, we'll jump into those. And then we'll basically go section by section through the strategic plan, taking both the priorities that staff identified, combining it with your own priorities and ultimately coming up with our priority list. Anything we want to remove, add, or change to the strategic plan. And ultimately, hopefully, we come out of tonight with as much consensus as we can about what we're going to do over the next five years so that when we come forward in the future and with budgets and whatnot, that there's as much consensus on possible and everything. It's also going to be how staff prioritize the work within the plan. So the things that you rank top priorities are going to get done first. The things that are lower priorities are going to get done later. And as you'll see in here, it's not the staff comments. We didn't get as many responses as we had hoped from staff. That was probably a combination of timing, length, et cetera. So it is a piece of data. Don't let it be the end all be all for what the strategic plan is. It's your plan as the city council. You direct us how to do our work and what to do. So that's really what we're going to try to get at today is making sure that what we have coming out of this is what you want us to be prioritizing over the next five years. So happy to answer any questions right off the bat about process, housekeeping, et cetera. Yeah.
As to consensus, you know that I am a 14 to 0, 12 to 2 kind of guy. How much disagreement should we have on the overall strategic plan for this to be an effective plan to leave committee?
So we have to have a level of disagreement. These are what we call strategic, like I said on the slide, they're strategic issues. As I told you all at the beginning, these are not the day-to-day stuff that we deal with. These are challenging issues without clear solutions, sensitive, what we call political dynamite issues at times. There are things that are sometimes third rails, but we have to talk about that. And we have to make sure that if they're happening to us, we're able to manage through it, process it, and ultimately come out on the other side better. So this will, this meeting will work best if we're open and honest with each other. That if some, if you think something is a really good idea or a really bad, like make sure to let it be known because this is going to be what staff do, what we prioritize. And we don't want to be prioritizing something that half of city council thinks secretly might not be a good idea. But if that's not made clear, how are we supposed to know that? So like I said, there's going to be a level of disagreement. That's okay. All I ask is that everyone be respectful and understanding that the ultimate outcomes we're trying to get at, that was a 14-0 vote. So these now are the methods that we're working towards these outcomes. So if you think about it in that context, it's maybe this isn't the best way to solve the problem or address this issue. And that's where I kind of want us to come from if there is and when there is disagreement is, is this the best way to address this issue? Is there a better way? Is there a different way? Is there some other thing that we hadn't thought about? That's kind of how I want us to kind of process through disagreement during the today's session. But if there's no disagreement, then that's not a good thing either. That, you know, I've been through a number of city council meetings. You got, I don't know if there's an issue that all 14 of you agree on, on everything, and that's okay. That's how government works. That's how democracy works. But so, yeah, to your point, there's going to be a level of disagreement. I just ask that everyone be respectful and understand that we voted 14-0 on the outcomes. We all agree on where we're trying to take the state. Now we're talking about the best way to get there.
Thank you.
No problem. And now we can do public comment if anyone else has no question. All righty.
Is there anyone here in the audience this evening that wishes to address city council with regard to the strategic plan? Okay. We can proceed.
So basically, we're in phase two, more or less. Strategic issues, goals, objectives, vision, mission, values. Next comes budgets, action plans, and strategies. That's all going to be through clear plans and clear GOV, how we do it, our specific steps we're going to take, any specific budgets associated with that. And then ultimately, the phase four, the evaluation, monitoring, implementation. That's really your role as a city council, making sure we're doing it, that we're implementing it, that we're following through with it, and that you're holding us accountable to being able to do those things. So I'll start off kind of quickly, just going through some of the data that we collected from staff. And I was really encouraged to see that, but with regard to the mission, vision, equity, and value statements, that they do resonate with our staff. The vast majority of folks feel that they can view their work within the context of the mission statement. That's a good thing. That means that staff are more likely to be engaged long-term. It leads to better organizations, more productivity, happier workers, happier people. And especially when an organization is mission-driven, is focused on a public good, that is, it facilitates growth and retention of staff and all those sorts of things. So the good news is regard to this, that there is broad understanding from our staff that they can view their work within this context, that they can see how their work aligns to the mission statement. Same thing with the vision statement, that staff can see that their day-to-day work aligns with the city's long-term vision. That's what we want. We want to make sure that everything's aligning so that we're all pulling in the same direction that everything we do is working towards the mission vision that we set forward. With regard to the equity statement, we asked, how comfortable would you be in implementing equity work within your day-to-day work? And the good news is a lot of our staff is comfortable in doing so somewhat. And that's something that we're glad to see because as we work on it more, as we continue to embed it and make sure that we're advancing equity and making sure that every single person in our town has access to services, has good outcomes, we're glad to see that there is, staff feel comfortable in doing that kind of work. And then with the values, we asked, how, to what extent do you feel that the city's value statements are reflected in your day-to-day work? And like, and the vast majority of staff say most or all the time. So what this says is, is within our current context of our day-to-day work, there's broad agreement from folks that they can see their connection to the broader picture. They can see their connection to some of the broad goals that you're all trying to achieve. And these are things that studies show, improve retention, improve employee wellness, improve our ability to hire staff. They're all things that are good for our organization. So when we have this, that's a really good sign. And so I want to make sure that nobody has any questions on this section or anything like that before we kind of jump into the first issues. Okay. So first things first is trustworthiness and transparency. Our outcome for this is Batavia is a city that is known for building trust through authentic, transparent communication with our residents. Through clear expectations, communication, and honest governance, we foster a community where everyone is heard and valued. And so with regard to this, this is, so the way you should view this is a lower number means it was ranked a higher priority. That's essentially the average of what position it was placed at, in this case, six. Variance is a measure that shows how widely dispersed responses were. So a higher variance number indicates there was more dispersion among staff about whether they feel that's a high priority or not. And so as you can see here, one of the top priorities identified is to increase the depth and breadth of community engagement initiatives, followed by text message pilot program, which is designed for residents to be able to engage with city services via text messaging for utility billing, community development, other things like that, rolling out and implementing Qualtrics and Code Red. The presentation and reports hub would be for when we give staff presentations, consultative presentations, that we have them all in one place on our website for people to be able to access and keep track of what's being presented to city council, for staff as well as for the public as well. Police department publishing use of force data on their website. That's something that is a just transparency initiative. We collect the data, we report it to the state every year. That would be another way of showing how things work and it lends into some of the issues to build trust within our, our community. And then expanded BATV relationship with AV type stuff, putting out more videos, using them to kind of help us share our word and share our messaging that we're trying to do. So the way I'm going to do this now is kind of open it up to you. What are your thoughts on this? Does this align with your priorities? Is there something that you feel is perhaps out of place? Is there something that, within the items that you want us to consider? I'm really kind of just going to open it to you all to make sure that whatever we're passing and discussing tonight aligns with what you want us to be doing.
Another question on the scale here, just to, if for my mind, to better understand these numbers, is this, so that is, in this case, is the scale from like one to six because there's six?
Yes.
Data points?
So it's in order that, so this is the cumulative order. So the number one priority was increased depth and breadth of community engagement initiatives in average. And then the lower priority was expanded BATV. And as you can see, there's variance among them. But this is kind of as a whole, among the 34 respondents who, who answered this, that's kind of how they ranked it.
Max?
Yeah.
Alderman Wolf. I like the, the listing that we have there. And I think especially to me, the first three of those, I think are going to be really important as we try to quantify where we are as we move through this plan and, you know, to try to judge what our benefits are out of it. So I think that in my mind, those really align up with where I think we should be going with the start of it. I, I don't know on the police one, if, you know, depending on what kind of timeframe they want to use on that and what has to come out, you know, per the state's direction and would that be something that they'd worry about as far as current cases or anything? I mean, I think I'd have a few questions on that, that, you know, as we plan out how that goes out, because I think it's good to have the data out to the public, but I also think we need to be careful with it.
Chief is here to add a little bit more information to that.
Yeah, so basically, right now, we collect use of force data on an annual basis. So as we've just wrapped up 2023, our deputy chief of operations is compiling the numbers. He'll have them presented to me probably by the beginning of March at the latest. And it's something that other agencies and departments, not only around the state, but around the United States are doing. And so we're not trying to reinvent the wheel here. I think it's something that's important to get out there to the community so that they have an understanding of, really in our case, how little force we use, you know, throughout the course of our day-to-day activities. So I don't have any concerns about getting that information published, that data put out there. I think it's a good thing.
Okay. And that's kind of what I thought it would probably be. I just wasn't sure how that would be handled, if it would be, you know, monthly, quarterly, yearly, how it would end up out.
Yeah, it would be, it would be published on an annual basis.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure our measure for that is that every year it's published annually. So if we're publishing it on an annual basis, we'd be meeting our goal for that, that specific item.
Okay.
Question?
How is?
Thank you.
How is use of force defined? Like what levels?
So really, it's, it's anytime our officers are having to restrain somebody, put their hands physically on somebody, not like a regular arrest where you're, you know, putting handcuffs on somebody. But if there's any measure of resistance, anytime we're using hands, grips, holds, and then obviously escalating all the way up through, you know, incidents involving shooting, which we, you know, fortunately don't have, but that's, that's the low end of the high end.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Designed, like Chief said, to be a transparent initiative of how little it's used and how responsible our police department is and how great they are at what they do. So any other sort of comments or questions on this section? It's pretty clear that the, the top three are good. But I also want to ask, when we say increase the depth and breadth of community engagement initiatives, is there anything that kind of comes to mind with you all? Because there's a lot of things that can be included in there. We're obviously going to work on action plans and come to you with our own ideas based on that and things that, you know, work best potentially. But are there any things that you've seen other communities do that you thought about potentially doing? And that's something we can obviously look into and consider as we move forward on this kind of initiative? Or any of these in particular, if there's anything that you want us to kind of keep in mind or like, hey, this might be a good thing to consider, let us know here so we can also include those. And when we develop our action plans, budgets, et cetera, that that's reflected.
My only input would be, it is a subjective thing, is what is increasing? That, that kind of information. How do you measure it?
So one of the things that I think staff talked about a lot was in particular in our public safety, both fire and police, they do maintain account of the number of community engagement activities that they engage in on an annual basis. So that would be one metric.
So our measure for this is the number of events and attendees at events with the goal to increase. So we would set kind of a baseline in 24 of what events we do, how many people attend, with the goal in future years to increase, to support and to bolster and make sure more people are attending, that there's better publicity, that our events are as successful as possible. But beyond what we're already doing, the thought is there is that, you know, is that meeting council's expectation? Or is there other things that kind of within, I wish we'd have, would have done this, you know? Yeah.
I think some of what we had talked about, especially with some of the initiatives coming up with the energy, is really how we go out and engage with our community with the changes and the opportunities with everything that's coming up from the energy standpoint. The other thing also, and a lot of times I tend to see it be the same people. And what can we do to not go to those people always as the first time, but other people that may be entrusted because that may turn away people that are interested in participating from participating because they see the same people always being, you know, first.
Do you mean from the people who are attending or the people who are presenting? Can you give an example of?
I just think, you know, sometimes when you have community initiatives and groups coming in, sometimes there are people that are selected because they're very active in the community, but there may be other people that want to participate that aren't even asked. And so I think that takes some of those individuals that want to participate, feel like, well, I'm never going to get picked because they always pick one, two, and three all the time.
With regard to community engagement initiatives and things like that, making sure that we're incorporating new voices, new people, and perhaps looking at different methods of incorporating opinions?
Instead of going to the same sources all the time, like who would you recommend for this? You know, we have many, many different organizations out there with many different people participating. So maybe gain a different mix.
Alan, question?
Yeah, I, I agree with that wholeheartedly, Jen. I think one of the things that I think of when I think of, you know, changing the, the depth and breadth of our community engagement is to have more people involved in the bicycle commission, the environmental commission, you know, the other things that are going on committee-wise, where we're trying to draw more of the public in. And how do we really expand that or make that so that it's not, so that those things are ready to grow? And when we do need people to step up and be on those committees, there are people in the wings ready to go and that have been involved maybe on small projects or other ways where we can get them involved in it ahead of time and, and think about how we engage more of the community to be part of that, you know? And not just, like you say, go to the same people every time, but expand those and, and make it more, you know, more awareness to the public where they know that those things are out there.
One thing we could do there is basically offer people to sign up to for a volunteer list, not necessarily for the committee itself, but so that the commissions have a list of people they know who are interested, that they can, you know, email out saying, we're having this event. If you can make it, please do, just as kind of like a foot in the door.
So like maintain more active, not rosters of people, but like, these are people that are engaged in biking or engaged in environmental work or?
They're not necessarily the commissioners of the group, but they are volunteers because they have an affinity for the topic.
Maybe even offer to send out information to the, that same list, saying, here's what they, the commission discussed this past month, or here's stuff going in our community related to this topic, just as a way to help people get engaged in a very specific topic they might be interested in and without necessarily having to upfront a lot on their side of things.
Kind of them having to go to the agenda and minutes section to go look for the minutes. They can sign up to have them sent to them or something like that.
I was just thinking a decent way to get more of the general public involved would just be more, more polling at like public events. So just doing more of what we're doing in terms of like, you know, wine nights in the park and maybe movie nights in the park or whatever, you know, whatever that might look like. But all of these events, trying to get a couple of things answered or get, get that public, that small group polled, you know, on a couple of items we're looking at at the time or whatever it might be, just to, just to get that gauge. Because let's be honest, you know, the town's great and we, and it's run well, so people just live here and just, they don't, you know, they don't have to worry about much. So, and that's a great thing. But, you know, I think if, if people are out and having a glass of wine and looking at a couple, you know, boards and, you know, gauging things, making fun somehow, I don't know, somebody would, you know, more creative than me could think of something. But, you know, just, just to get that gauge of the public and what they're thinking.
On that, on that idea, a lot of this was also meeting people where they're at, maybe hosting seasonal board block parties. So not just downtown, but like maybe at some of the parks around town, work with the Park District, have an event there. You know, I mean, there's some very large open parks that you could have small events that we don't really do as much of right now so that people who are interested in the city can come, who live in that area, might feel more included that way and have us folks?
Maybe to help you host events within your ward to meet you.
That'd be very excellent.
During that, during the summertime when we have block parties, we're copied on those. Have you ever crashed one of those parties before? So I've crashed all of them. I go to every block party where I get copied on them and I show up as, as the guy that says, did you guys request a fire truck? Make sure a fire truck shows up, someone from Public Works. It's a way to get them talking about community issues and gets the dialogue started. So all the kids have been, they ran up to the truck to meet the firefighters. It's the parents that sit back and they say, so what's going on with that damn? What's going on with that thing? And it gets them more engaged. So if you don't have as full of a social life as I don't, I crash block parties. There are so many happening all summer long.
Doing that?
Yeah, you and Laura both said something that I was thinking of was what, what role we all play in this. I mean, to your, you, you would go to the homestead every year, which is awesome, going and observing people where they are, watching, you know, where they struggle or what their challenges are might often be a more accurate representation than the voices that we hear if we hear the same voices all the time or we're getting the engagement from the same people. Like, how do we be more effective? That might be a different, that might be the government's section.
That might be something we bring up at the retreat.
And I, and I think that touches on another point is where is it an alderperson's responsibility versus where is that more of a staff responsibility? And that's, one of the things we're also going to be clear about is, the whole idea of the strategic plan is to do things better, different, or expanded. As you probably know, there's not a whole lot of slack or resources currently to take on a whole host of expanded, new, broad initiatives. So that's something that you all need to think about and wrestle through as alderpeople, as the ultimate policymakers for, for this body in this city. We, for example, increasing community engagement events, going out to block parties, doing these things, we can do them, but it means that there may be trade-offs of things that we can't do anymore if we don't. So basically, we have a finite amount of resources and staff time. And, you know, that's kind of where we're at currently. And it becomes the issue of if we do expanded things, something either needs to fall off more or less, or we need to consider additional resource. So that's kind of what I want you just think about. We don't have to get through that all day, but this is going to be a conversation over the next five years as we implement this plan and consider it, that if things are identified as top priorities for the council and we don't existing or currently have resources to fully do those things as much as we'd like, we could, we'll share what we can do, but we're also going to be honest about what we didn't get to or what we haven't been able to do. And that, that's kind of a conversation for you all to continue thinking about and having amongst yourselves about how do we properly staff or resource this organization to get to the outcomes and goals and initiatives that you want us to be doing? So, yeah.
I will say it is a bit difficult just as, you know, and just an alderman knowing what your guys' bandwidth is, that's kind of the divide that's going on here. I don't know if there's good like ways to visualize that data?
That's one of the things that we hope clear plans helps in some regard. We'll be able to provide updates and be like, we haven't been able to get to this. This is now behind track because we don't have time to do it. You'll be able to see those in there. And we may come to you for things throughout the course of this plan if they're high priorities, but there also may be things like, hey, we just never got to this because we didn't have the resources to do so. And that's why we're asking you to prioritize things so we can more or less work our way down the list and we're knocking out high priority, high payoff activities first. And then as capacity allows, we're able to get into some of the lower priority items, if that makes sense.
I had one note on that, just looking at this, because I use these all the time, and that's create a presentation and reports hub. I mean, what's holding us back from that? Why can't we just knock that out like?
There's going to be low-hanging fruits in here. And those are things you're, you're going to see those kind of knocked out.
So on a go-forward basis, we can create the place where those things exist, and then we can make a new policy where if you're, have a presentation as part of what you're presenting at city council, in addition to sending it to Karen to attach to the agenda, you also go over and add it to the presentation hub. That will help us on the go-forward. We, it may take us time because of resources to put the stuff that came before up there.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, no problem.
Yeah.
There's, you'll see in the plan, well, there's low-hanging fruits kind of peppered throughout that are, yeah.
Oh, continue your thought.
No, I was finishing.
Can you clarify, is it a three-year plan or a five-year plan?
We're going to make it a five-year plan. So what I will do after we finish up our conversation today, next COW will probably have a revised version that'll have revised years based on priorities. So we'll kind of, all right, what do we think we can get done in 24, 25, 26, so on and so forth? So.
Very busy 2024.
Yeah, that, that's why we're asking you to do this discussion tonight is so we can have better understanding of your priorities and we can properly sequence the work. You know, if there's something like a low-hanging fruit, like a presentation reports hub, that might fall in 24 among other projects. But if it's something that is like, you know, the, the text message pilot program, that might fall in 25 or something. We'll, we'll hopefully get to it. That's the goal is to get to as much as we can. But the prioritization from council is kind of going to be how we work through it. High priorities first, lower priorities later on.
Max? I would suggest that one of the things, and we do this personally already, but maybe set up some kind of a city council informational website that would, as a case in point, Alderman Lancy's been involved with a constituent who has some problems with their Groot waste invoices. And I've had like three other people call me and ask about this same thing about, you know, it says it's due today, but you got 30 days after the fact. I think those are kind of pieces of information that the council should be made aware of and we should share it with everybody so that all of you know that that's the kind of stuff. And I think if we put together just a little website on, you know, another one that I will tell you that I've had over the years is people don't like the brightness of the street light. And so that's one where we've had to bring in the electrical utility, which we should. And there's a couple of times they've gone and changed the bulb and done a few things to kind of do that. We don't always do it, but I mean, we, we make it available that that can be done for people to do it. One of the classics we had was we had a gentleman that lived down on the southwest side of Batavia. And he was, I believe a stroke kind of paralyzed him, so he couldn't walk anymore, but his family bought him a riding scooter. And he began riding his riding scooter. And maybe once a month he'd show up at the mayor's office with his monthly report on condition. And his condition was, where is there a cracked sidewalk on Blaine Street? Or where is there a piece of sidewalk missing on Carlisle Road near McLean School? And quite honestly, it was somewhat helpful because it allowed us to have a, a personal experience from a citizen that he, he had this. that he had this ability to do this. He since has passed away and I went to his funeral and his kids asked me if I would speak a little bit about him. So in the eulogy I gave, I described him as the man who patrolled the sidewalks of Batavia and made them safer. And everybody there just thought that was really nice that the mayor was up there saying this about him. But I mean, it's that kind of lower type stuff that I think a lot of people resonate to. And, you know, if the council can know that if there's a crack in the sidewalk, this is the person, or call Laura, but I mean, there's ways that we can do this and share the communication of it because it's that little stuff that really gets under the spurs of some people.
So two points on that. One, one of the initiatives in our plan is to better direct residents to reliable, accurate information about city services, that they're not just getting it through a Facebook group or through word of mouth, that there's an authoritative, this is what's happening, this is what's going on, rumor patrol almost. And that's something that I know I've talked to Lori about and that we're hoping to do. But also to the second point, we have Public Works portals and other things, perhaps better promotion, making sure residents are aware. That's kind of how we're going to do this. We have existing tools, but kind of elevating those, making sure that people know they exist, how to access them and how to kind of share, because those are valuable points. And we just want to make sure that those are getting to the right folks and we can take action on them.
I just think maybe their appearance on a city computer page would be something that would be quite valuable for people on these kind of lowercase issues that really some people take very seriously. And some, like the guy with the scooter, that proved to be a necessary thing for about 10 or 12 people down in his area that thanked me for having him out there patrolling the sidewalks. So.
Anything else on trustworthiness and transparency before we move on to vibrant and diverse community?
Actually, just have a more general question. So the staff survey that was sent out, was it sent out to the entire staff?
Yes.
Do we know if all of the department heads responded to the staff survey?
We didn't ask if they were a department head. We asked them what department they were part of.
Yeah, we wanted to, it's a fine balance between like, are you a department head? And then we can pretty clearly fit, we don't want to be.
No, no, I didn't want that, like, I wasn't asking if we knew who the department head was. But.
Yeah, what you're saying.
More curious on what level in a department we are getting these responses from.
So.
So like a Gary is going to give us maybe a very different response than somebody who's driving a truck on the road.
So, for example, we've got comments when, so we met with staff on Tuesday to go through this and kind of talk through priorities and make sure that if there were notes or things we wanted to make clear. So that was more, so that's to your point, the department head perspective, that's kind of reflected in comments. We mostly agreed with what our staff put. There were a few things here and there that we wanted to add context or be like, you know, this is actually, well, it's important. Like there's some factors that we need to consider there, so.
That will bring up on some points like the capacity analysis. For instance, was rated fairly low, but there was also a lot of variance in the answers that were given. But senior staff feel like that's a very important thing because it has to do with future headcount planning for the organization. And so that would be an example where the department heads probably had a little bit of a different idea about that than.
It wasn't really like disagreement. It meant just like we on.
And some were talking about, is that something that we necessarily need to have an external consultant assist us with that? Or is that something that maybe we should undertake first as the department heads ourselves to talk about future capacity needs? And then determine if, because those capacity studies can be really quite expensive.
So we'll make sure to mention those things throughout tonight's conversation is not when there was a disagreement, but sure, disagreement.
Just difference of opinion.
Sure, same way to say the same thing, but you get what I'm saying. Anything else on that before we jump into vibrant and diverse community?
I think it would be, could we infer perhaps that because so many people did not respond to the survey that they're pretty content with how Batavia is? And that they just trust the future and where we're moving with this?
I guess what I would say is throughout this whole process, we've tried to give as many opportunities as we can to staff to share input. I've been pretty consistent in sending out emails and having an open office and talking to folks just in day to day conversations about items. Those have been reflected, so a lot of informal feedback went into this. But also, we held multiple sessions throughout three days for people to share input. A lot of it goes to it's time consuming to read through and to provide input and to understand and to implement. And kind of gets back to what I said earlier. Not everyone has that capacity or chunks of time to be able to work on something. And it's why it's a piece of the data that we're using. It's not the end all be all. There's some things here and there that we've reprioritized or said this should be moved up for clear reasons. But what we did is we use this as a baseline, kind of to start off like, all right, broad picture, let's use this. But then take it further and use it as a piece of data, not the entire piece. All right, so moving on to vibrant and diverse community. Batavia has multiple vibrant downtown, high density residential areas where diverse people come together to form a lively, inclusive community. We aim to enhance the riverfront, making it a thriving business, residential and recreational hub that reflects the excellence of our community. So with regard to this, I'm going to zoom in a bit if I can. Yeah, I see it, or do you need me to zoom in? All right.
Try Ctrl and plus.
There we go. All righty, so. There we go. Sorry about that. So within this section, it's, there was a decent amount of variance, but really, first things first is the downtown plan. We know we've spent a lot of resources and effort to develop that. And that would be within the recommendations and things we should be doing within the downtown plan, making sure that those take a high priority within our work. The connecting of the River Trail to the River Street and at the Larson Becker property, that's something that I would like some additional feedback and kind of if you vision something for there and understanding that that is likely going to be a more expensive project if we undertake it. We have it budgeted for these things in this year's budget. We can always put them in future year's budget, but that's a conversation that we'll have in future years. But really, opening it up to questions and kind of comments and discussion about this area. And so the couple of comments that staff had are, so we've already begun collecting candidate info proactively. You know, people reach out to our police and fire department sometime and we'll kind of keep them on a list and make sure that, hey, if we have openings or a training, we reach out to them. However, ultimately, a rolling lateral list is something that's a little out of our control. It's ultimately up to the police and fire board. So that's something that we can evaluate and potentially bring to them. But it's kind of something that they would have to decide to do. And then, like I said, any work at Larson Becker, if that's a high priority for the council, is not currently budgeted. And that's something that probably could run. It would be a more, a pretty expensive project if we chose to undertake it. My understanding is in the past, that was something that the city council chose not to do. It was something that I think the city council, that was more of a park district thing. And so that's, if that's still the case, then that's still the case. But if there's changes or, you know, we want to undertake that and make sure that that is connected and that's done there, that that's something that we can talk about.
What changes are envisioned there?
Because my understanding would be where the stairs are would be a ramp.
Is to solve the stairs problem. And, you know, one of the possible solutions could be some type of switch pack, switchback that uses the grade to then come up. But in past discussions with council, which probably more than a year ago, it was considered, well, that those stairs there are really the park district's stairs. And then also the hope was that when development happened on the Larson Becker property, that we could say to the developer, if they wanted something from the city, we could say, well, then we would like you to resolve this issue with regard to the stairs and come up with a way to.
My understanding is that this property is part of the downtown plan, I think. And so that's.
It's one of the priority areas.
Exactly. So we may, like, you may see that, okay, if there's a developer that comes along, we may push artwork on that or put like, it kind of, it gives us flexibility. But ultimately, if this is something that council actually does view as a high priority, I think this is probably something that's going to come in in the half million. Like, that's kind of where that's going to be if that project is something that council wants to do. And that would be something that we could put in future budgets for you all to consider. But that's something that we'd like some feedback on, all these items, especially some of the like city marketing initiative. That costs funding, but it potentially brings in business, brings in consumers, increases our atmosphere and sets a distinct brand for the city. There's pros and cons. The pros are obviously you get these benefits and the potential outcomes of that. But we also have to understand that these cost funds. And that's ultimately what I want you to think about and consider those trade offs and communicate to us at staff and as a team where your priorities lie and whether that's something we should be doing or should not be doing.
And also, we have worded these in such a way, you'll see research in the beginning of it. And so it ends up in the plan as, you know, do you even want staff to spend resources researching this item? It's not a big commitment there. You know, we're not asking for the budget to create the city marketing initiative. It's just to research what that would look like if we were to engage in it.
That's where you'll also see with Clear Plans and as we move through this plan, we may take care of that year one or year two. And then year three, we add an item on there to do the initiative. We come to you with the budget and that budget cycle, and it's kind of all wrapped together. But we present you the results of our research, like, hey, this is something we recommend, here's what cities did, here's how it benefited them, here's what the ROI was, all these things that we can present to you as, okay, we like, but do you want us to even take these initial first steps on some things? Like branding districts like workforce and rental housing? Is that stuff you want us to be expending staff and time on? Understanding that there may be things that fall off in doing that. But the idea is anything in a strategic plan is designed to be a high priority, high payoff activity. And if we're able to find things that are lower priorities that we do instead of, or we do these instead, but there's going to be things that then just don't happen or don't get done. And that's what we'll communicate as to what those may be and what the trade offs are of any specific activity.
So Max, if we could, tell me if I'm stating this correctly. Two priorities for tonight would be to say, since we've identified these as having a high impact on the objective, should all of these remain in here? Or do you think that there are things in here that aren't high payoff activities? In which case, they shouldn't end up in the plan? And then the other part of the discussion would be to identify the highest priority items that you would like to see us accomplish first and foremost? Like perhaps implement the downtown plan?
Max, can I bring you a little history lesson here? The bridge out here, the bike, the bridge we now love, you know, we love our bridge, I love it too. That was a real collection of political involvement by a whole bunch of people. And one of them was Phil Elstrom, who was then Kane County Board Chairman. And he owned the building right where the bridge comes in. And he had to donate a bunch of his land on the east bank to allow that bridge to get set in over there. And he gladly did it, so that was made. Then we had the presence of Fermi Lab in the town. And the state of Illinois said to me that they thought that we needed to replace the old Wilson Street Bridge, which had been built in 1913, with a new wider, more pedestrian friendly, et cetera, bridge. And they gave us what they call a BURP grant, Bridge Rehabilitation and Replacement Grant. Basically, it paid for the whole bridge. So one of the reasons the Batavia residents today enjoy a pretty low municipal property tax is we're not, we don't have a big debt on us hanging there for paying for that new bridge that was, that was basically donated. And so all this stuff began to come together and they started looking around what is happening over there. And you've all seen those great big electrical towers that come up on behind Funway and come up and they go all the way through Batavia. And basically what that is, so I am told, is that's the emergency power backup line for Geneva and St. Charles coming off of the Commonwealth Edison system. So, you know, if you're really going to do something there, you're probably going to have to bury some wire at some point in time because those have a tendency to kind of get in the way. The other thing that's there is, is that there, when the challenge, Windmill Factory was there and where Pal Joey's now is for a long time was a, basically, they made milk there. And that's where the name Buttermilk Alley came from. And so there was a lot of moving parts. So there, I believe there's still laying in the ground on, over there, a railroad right of way that's never really been totally erased. It never will be used again, but we have to go through it. I think it's a wise investment, you know? It's coming over a period of time that, you know, it started almost 40 years ago to do this. And we've got where we are. I would hope that we, as a council, would put it in our idea that we want to kind of finish that off because there's a lot of people that have made significant investments. Phil Elstrom probably gave hundreds of thousands of dollars of money or land away to get that in place over there. So there's been a lot of commitment on the parts of people to do this. So it's just something though, that we're living, we're living with history here. We're living with a railroad right of way that's no longer used, but it's still reported. We're living with this common easement that goes through downtown Batavia on the east bank that probably should be buried. And I've had some conversations with Edison and they said, well, it could be done. It's going to cost a lot of money. And, you know, I don't think they want to pay for it, but they, there's a lot of different things. So I would hope that we would keep this one alive because it really does have some benefits. And certainly now with the bicycle riding that's going on here, Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning comes out here maybe once every couple of years and they sit here from Friday night till Sunday night and count all the bicycles in a reaction coming down to all the. And this is like a major interchange on the bicycle trail because you can't cross the river many other places except in downtown Batavia. Last time I remember, CMAP counted, it was over 5,800 bicycles came across the river in a two day period of time. And that's probably more now than what it was. So I think we have to realize what we're living with here, that we have a lot of amenities that probably need to be fine tuned, but we've got them in place.
I was going to say, ahead of any larger plan, could there be a more temporary solution? We can put there like a, basically just a bike rail so you don't have to lift up your bicycle to bring it up the stairs, but you could slowly.
There actually is in the middle, that bike rail, to put your tire on it to walk it up next to you.
I feel like that's a bit unwieldy though, if I remember looking at it.
Well, again, do we want to make improvements to something that's not our property?
Fair.
It's just a question. We could. The park district has made a few requests to us to assist them with some of the expenses associated with their assets. I don't.
My comment on this section is that I would, I prioritize the workforce and rental housing item a lot higher than it is on this list, above some of the tourism or marketing activities. I think that's going to be really important for keeping our city viable and vibrant. And it had me thinking about the way that this outcome is phrased at the beginning too, about higher density, or however it's phrased, high density residential areas downtown. And while I do want more high density residential areas downtown, I also want to see a good mix of housing throughout the town, not just downtown. And then I had a question too, kind of on one of the existing efforts that are in the plan in terms of recruiting and retaining diverse talent. I know where I work, when they started to engage in DEI discussions, this was back in 2018, that, kind of a general question just to kind of hint at the culture and explain the culture and get a reaction from a candidate, was worked into all interviews starting back five years ago. So when I interviewed, it came up and it was, it was very cool to see that right up front. This is a priority and we just want to know kind of what it means to you. It was a real generic, very, very broad. Does anything like that exist in our current interview process? Or is that something that we could perhaps add just as a, if this is one of our values, if this is a culture shift that's being made to make sure we're as upfront as possible in our approach to hiring?
Saying if somebody is not in favor of DEI, that we should look at them unfavorably? unfavorably?
If recruiting diverse and fostering a, a culture of belonging for multiple different backgrounds, beliefs, racial diversity...
That's different than DEI, we know that.
If that is one of our priorities, then I think something like that should be worked in...
Wendy has a...
To an interview.
So I would say during the interview process, we don't ask a specific DEI question, but we ask several, I consider them behavioral-based questions in regards to working as a team, working with coworkers, working with people of differing viewpoints, conflict. We ask many questions along those ideas, as far as to talk about what is expected and what Batavia values in each of the specific departments.
Or it could be more.
And we could, yeah, exactly. We could create a specific question.
I wrote down a note on it. Thanks.
Max, can I make a comment on this one? We've had this discussion here at the council rather recently about, quote-unquote, affordable housing, you know, 200,000 or whatever the number was we wanted to float, and we had newspaper reporters sitting in the audience the last time that was done. And the day after we all spoke and had this discussion, I got, as the mayor, I got three different calls from real estate investors wanting to know where these affordable housing lots are going to be. I had one guy tell me, well, if you're going to put $200,000 houses, want $200,000 houses on those lots, I'll buy them all right now. And I, you know, I'm thinking, well, he's got some other ideas that he's going to offer it as a $200,000 house, but then they'll plug in all kinds of amenities and additions or enhancements to it, and the number will quickly go up. You know, the Tri-Cities area is, got a legacy here, because in the city of Geneva, they built this thing over on East Side Drive, which is just to the north of the Geneva Fire Station, and it was Mr. Shodine that built it, and it was called Geneva East, and it was going to bring the, quote-unquote, affordable house to Geneva. And I think if you go into the records and look at it, there's real arguments about whether that remained an affordable house, because it was in Geneva and the good schools and all the good amenities that Geneva has, that price just was, I want to say, it was maybe started at 160,000, and within a few months, it was 220, and then it was up higher, 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 and I don't know what they're selling for, I haven't looked recently. But that's, that's a great idea. I'm not arguing it with you, but there is a lot of, underneath it, the brown falls out on you, because everybody wants to get in on that and make money, and so as a result, unless you pass some kind of an ordinance that says, well, we're going to build this house, but it can't ever sell for more than X number of dollars, that would really cause some people to have some interesting reaction, so...
Are you talking more about, for instance, we had one group who came in here and was talking about an affordable multifamily housing where they were utilizing tax credits for low income in order to subsidize the development? Is that more what you're, because then the rents would be controlled for a period of, like, 30 years?
I would love to see a, a plan laid out that addressed a broad spectrum of things. That's certainly a piece of it. Mayor, some sort of a control piece, I don't really know what that looks like. One example that just came up this week that I had emailed staff about, so my grandma lived on East Wilson Street, and right after they moved in, they subdivided the house into a lower and an upper unit. She was widowed young, was able to raise four kids in Batavia and live off of that rental income until her 90s. That is illegal today. She never would have been able to do that, and she would never have been able to stay. My family would not be in Batavia if that was the case. I had a resident reach out this week, a single mom who would like to stay in her home and can't afford to, was looking into subdividing, and it's illegal to do. So I think there's a whole lot of tweaks where we could make very minor changes to see the landscape and our housing options change across the city.
Is that something, is there consensus on that, looking at...
So is this still within the...
So that would move that up as a priority?
So where do you, can someone offer a suggestion as where it should slot in?
Downtown plan number one, still, but other, and recruiting diverse talent is still really important.
That's the hard thing, is like, it's not saying that, it's not not important, it's all...
None of these are unimportant.
I would really move it to two, because that is a big issue, especially with Fermilab and the number of people that are going to be attracting and needing to have housing for those people, and if we want to keep them in Batavia, you know, we need to be able to provide that housing for them. Yeah.
Mark takes that housing number value, though, and just runs away with it, given where it, Batavia, Geneva, St. Charles.
But if we change some of our coding to allow somebody to turn a house into a duplex into, you know, the lower level, upper level, I mean, I lived in an upper-level apartment and a house just down the street when I first became a single mom with my kid, and I was grateful for that opportunity, because I wanted to raise my kid in this community and go to these schools, but I had limited income. And so being able to afford to live in a place like that, as I was able to save to be able to purchase, not a big house, but a duplex, again, a different type of housing, has allowed me to raise my daughter in this community.
I'm not going to argue with you, but I would just offer that you go to do that, you've got to be careful, because knowing what the neighbors may get up excited about and come in and...
My neighbors weren't mad at all about it. They were very welcoming. And if we're going to be a community that's going to welcome diverse people, I don't think that that should be a concern, and I don't think that should hold us back from doing it.
I'll just tell you, I've been here a long time, as you know, and I've seen it, where the neighbors don't like the idea that you're taking the house and making it into a duplex, so we get a big Plan Commission hearing and everything else going. I'm not opposed to it, I'm just saying that it's not a real easy thing to just snap your fingers and achieve that.
We know there's going to be challenges, and we'll work through those, and we'll try to be clear and explain when those exist and when those happen. But, you know, it's, we get to a challenge, we try to find a way through it if we can, if that's something we care about and that we value and we want to achieve.
If I read these numbers correctly, that, so, really, staff's responses were all over the board on this, right?
With the exception of branding districts, I guess, but...
Right, the last one.
Which I think was a shame.
And again, it's, that's, that's partially a good thing.
Yeah, I was thinking about it both ways.
Yeah.
I mean, it will stay in the plan. What I hear from all of you on this one is that all of these things should remain in the plan, but there are three top priorities, which are implement the downtown plan, and probably almost equally, expand efforts to, to create a plan to recruit and retain diverse talent, and prioritize and seek development of workforce and rental housing. That's accurate.
We know those two things go hand in hand.
What do you mean?
Or it seems like we're talking about them hand in hand. Like, in order for us to retain and recruit diverse talent, we need a development of rental and workforce housing.
No, not necessarily. There's all kinds of diversity included in the first, whereas in the prioritaries and seek workforce and rental housing really has to do with just affordability.
Just to kind of go back to what Abby was saying about the, the question, the diversity question, I think a big thing that a lot of businesses are asking is incorporating the DEI and asking these types of questions, and if somebody's not comfortable with knowing that they're going to a, work, to work for a company that believes in this, they're going to make that decision not to work for it. So I agree with Abby that that should be a question that is saying, hey, this is, you know, whatever way we do it, this, this is the type of community we are, this is the type of workforce that we have.
I do want to say that to Wendy's point, we do project that to people, but if you'd like us to be more intentional about it, we can certainly incorporate that.
I think it's something that...
Those are all things we can address.
I, I don't know, I'd be interested in hearing what other older people, but I would be interested in being more intentional about it.
I don't hear anybody saying be less intentional about it, right?
I think you need to be careful with the way you worded the questions you have. I mean, geez, it's getting, I think what Wendy's already explained is very sufficient and also very legal. Let's not go too far, okay? That's my point.
And that's why it's, create a plan, too. The plan incorporates these things, like, we would ask these, should we include this? We would do these things, so that would ostensibly come back to you all or be shared with you all in some way, so that it's not just happening, it's like, we inform you, here's what we've developed, we've researched, we've considered legality, we've considered things like that, and that's, on staff end, goes into what we ultimately do or present. We do the research, we do the backend work, and we use our expertise as a staff to kind of take the broad goal, but then dive deeper into it.
In the hiring process, in the interview process, are our vision and mission statements shared with people interviewing?
Not specifically in the interview process. Typically, in the postings, we usually have that in the, when you go to our website landing page, but we could, definitely something to look at as far as, we want to have more specific. I know, I know with fire and police, I'm not 100%, but I know they specifically talk about their specific mission and vision, obviously, in the public safety arena.
I mean, I think it would make sense, anybody who's going to come and work for the city of Batavia should know what our mission and vision is and be on board with that. And if they're not, then they need to know this isn't our, this, this isn't a place that, you know, is going to be my best fit, and I need to go find another work environment, so...
Anything else on this section?
Just to kind of steelman branding districts a little bit here, I don't think it's a terrible idea, depending on how much, how in-depth we get into it. It could be interesting having a visual design guide for different parts of our, different parts of our town, because I know it was mentioned in the staff highlights, somebody suggested that we're a small town, we don't really need different districts, but there are parts of Batavia that are wildly different than other parts of Batavia, like, it's...
Sure, and we will, because it's going to be included in the plan, we're going to bring the discussion back to council. So it, at this point, it is still part of the plan, so you're not saying that we should take it out of it, you're saying we should leave it in there and have a serious discussion about it.
I think, I think it's worth a look at.
Absolutely.
And in a way that I think could bolster other activities throughout the plan in terms of placemaking and thus, community vibrancy and such.
Yeah, the thought there is the trade-off, and this is why it's research and consider, because we did have pros and cons. On the one hand, it creates a distinct sense of place, but that may separate it from another area that we're also trying to bring in, and it may almost segregate to distinct or similar areas, perhaps, in a way that we don't actually want. So if we call something like an arts district or whatever, it's like, great, that's one area, and then, you know, nobody would do anything outside of that in that area. So it, there's trade-offs, and that's why it's research and consider, but is, is it still within priorities, like, where you all want it? It's lower down currently, it would be one of the later things we would get to, probably, if we do much later in the plan, but, you know, we hope to, because it's last, it's, I can't say with any certainty that we'll get to it.
I almost, you know, just, I almost don't see them as necessarily, we have to rank all of these things. I think right now we need to identify what the few priority items are that we should start on first, and then, you know, we can see how things are able to fall into the plan.
I almost see the branding of the districts as a subcategory to the downtown plan, because the downtown plan has already divided the downtown into different segments, and so I think the important part is to do that, and then maybe the next part is then to consider that.
Would this just be downtown or other parts of town? I know we have the South River Street corridor study coming up, but also just...
That has not been pre-prescribed.
Yeah.
This may turn into a 10-year plan with that type of vision.
Take it, we hear those, we're behind on workforce, I think, we're way, we're too late.
And quickly to Jen's point about 10-year, like, it's designed to kind of carry forward. If there's things that are still priorities, and we get five years from now, and it's like, oh, we didn't get to it, great, add it to the next one, maybe it's a higher priority, and there's other things that slide in later down. So, anything else on this section? So we'll move rental housing and workforce housing up, and really prioritize, expand efforts to recruit and retain diverse talent, downtown plan and workforce and development and rental housing. Next, we'll jump into environmental. All right, Batavia will be a model of environmental leadership striving for carbon-neutral energy sources, promoting innovative sustainability measures and developing in a sustainable and efficient manner. We've been known for our dedication to energy efficiency, waste reduction programs, and sustainable infrastructure design that fosters future growth. So we've got a couple of staff comments here. We do still intend to move forward with the Greatest Greenest Region Compact Working Group, acknowledging that it's something we have to do and that it's really important, and it is partially in lieu of a dedicated sustainability staffer. That is something that council's kind of made clear, something that you care about, and this is a way we would embed that work within every part of our city. When it comes to things like electric vehicles, we're trying, when we can, even with hybrids, we can't buy them. They're not being sold, they're not available, I mean, we're having a hard time even getting normal cars nowadays. We try, but just know that that's something that we're probably going to continue to have problems on, as supply chain continues to be an issue. And also, we may just have some vehicles that are not suitable for electric vehicles at this time. The technology's not there, the, there's worries and whatnot in its operational use, and that's why the measure in there is eligible vehicle, so we'll determine, like, okay, perhaps an admin fleet where it's less, you know, in duty and more travel and stuff like that, that may be a better suited car for electric, but like, a heavy-duty public works truck that does leaf pickup or something, that's going to be much further down the line, is something that potentially gets electrified. We also currently follow many salt-smart practices, but we haven't achieved certification, so that's something that we could work on. And then one of the things with separating sewers, that's something we do ongoing, but it's something that we identified as one of the most important resiliency pieces for long-term preparation for climate change and anything that comes with that, that likely as rainfall increases, as the effects there, that it increases our capacity at our plant, and it allows us to continue to develop in an efficient manner, so...
It's also one of the probably highest-ticket items that is in the, probably the whole plan.
Yeah, it is probably top five in impact. It's not sexy, you know, great, your sewers are separated, but you notice it when...
A lot to be...
Yeah, it, it pays dividends down the line, it's, it's something to consider, but ultimately, any expansion beyond what we're already doing, that, that's something that council needs to consider. It's a high payoff, it works, it's effective, but it's expensive, as most things that are impactful and do their job well are. So that's something to consider as to, is that still something you want to see? And if so, what are people's thoughts on, because understanding that that is something that, you know, council could decide to appropriate additional funding in future years to advance that, you know, a pool of money, or a pool of funding to do that work gets us X separations or something like that. I think our measure that we use is the ratio of combined to separated, with the goal of making it so that there are more separated than combined sewers, or continuing to tend in that direction. We'll track that data, but understanding that this is very, very impactful, but very, very expensive. So that's something to think about and wrestle with as we move forward. And then lastly, the infrastructure study that you see, number two, we talked about that a little bit in prior weeks, that's designed to start with the capstone, which we hopefully will hear back in the next couple of weeks. Then it would transition to a more professional, long-term study that informs rates, infrastructure, et cetera. So that's kind of how that would work. But again, same question you all, is this kind of what you think, and any considerations or comments you have for us to consider as we move forward? Yeah.
Regarding the, the, the develop the architectural standards, incorporate sustainable materials, I see that as like when we're like building new residents and housing, is that kind of in that same area of when...
Yeah, so my understanding with that area is it's, one of the ideas you mentioned was something called form-based zoning, which is more like how things look, as opposed to the land use.
Okay.
This potentially is a precursor, like, in order to, anyone who does form-based zoning, you have to start with some sort of design standards, so this would be almost a precursor to that. You know, it was something that you identified you'd be interested in, but we understand that there has to be things first to kind of get us there.
Well, and I know that the state just, a law that just came into... Well, and I know that the state just, a law that just came into law was every new development has to have a EV setup and multifamily has to have set up. So how do we incorporate these, when the states put laws?
That's the baseline for what our requirements are. We wouldn't be able to deviate from that.
Right, but, okay, so how do we-
We could, we could have something that's stricter than that, but the state is going to establish the baseline for that. Except for the new energy code that is associated with the new state building code, that is both minimum and maximum, you can't deviate at all from what the new state energy code is with regard to the, the building code.
Okay, because I, because I see something like that as a requirement, something that, you know, as new developments come, they have to know that this is-
We don't have a choice. Yeah, we probably are the ones who are enforcing that on behalf of the state of Illinois.
And, and how are we incorporating that into the materials that when a developer comes to us?
They know that because they're using professional architectural and engineering firms and they know as professionals and because of their professional liability insurance, that they have certain standards to which they should be designing. Now, do they sometimes make errors? They do, you know, and thus, and then Jeff Albertson will say, you may not have realized this, but the, the city has a higher standard for the soundproofing between walls and multifamily units. The city of Batavia has a higher standard in a town home with a shared wall for the amount of burn time between the units, which we thankfully have recently, that really came into play and saved, conjoined units from both being burned. So we, in some cases, have higher standards that maybe architectural firms won't have looked at and they just hand in the documents that are according to the state of Illinois and then we have to go back and tell them that we have some higher, but they should be looking at our building code.
I just want to make a clarification regarding form-based zoning. It's not simply a matter of architectural preference, but more in relation to how a building interfaces with the street in front of it. I just want to clarify that for everyone.
But it kind of gets to the issue of like a design versus just, this is industrial, this is commercial, this is residential, it takes-
Not just visual design, not just standard of beauty necessarily, although it plays some part, but more practical design of how people use this building in relation to the street and broader area. So, anyway.
Is that something, a clarification we could kind of add to this list so that we are making sure that it is that scaffolding up to discussion of forming?
We will, we would include, so at the end of this, we'll talk about a section called like big picture stuff, like maybe we consider for the next planner for longer term, like this is designed to connect to that, that's where we'll mention that. But that's, we kind of view this as, there are some things in here that are precursors to other things that, you know, we know this is potentially like, to move to that kind of zoning takes time and takes, you have to do some things to do that initially. And that's kind of, so there are things in here that are designed to kind of be first steps and we'll make clear when we can that that's the case.
Five to 10?
I, I don't know, it could be. I mean, it's something that ultimately you'll wrestle with as a city council and that we'll talk through and there's obviously pros and cons to doing so. It's something that's newer, obviously, it's different than the traditional zoning we have and many cities do have, but-
Like the really old ways.
True, okay, fair, true to that, yeah, exactly. But it's that, it'd be new to, new to our existing processes and all that, but I understand what you're saying.
Just a question, if all of you are tracking with the priorities that are identified here in terms of digitizing the paper processes, energy infrastructure study, explore waste reduction and continue separating sewers, would that be kind of a set of four priority initiatives that we could have consensus on?
I agree with staff that having the working group and the climate impact analysis tool. And I wanted to also, I know that I saw it in another section, the memo template updates.
Yeah, we'll talk about that.
Will that be as part of the climate-
We have comments on that too. We'll talk about that in a bit.
That's also one of my top priorities.
Thoughts?
I was going to ask for the bike, for the bike patrols, was there any interesting differences between the police department themselves and the broader city staff? Because I feel like they might have different like perspectives on that, I don't know if that would-
I didn't dig that deep into the data. I could have, but I chose not to. But ultimately, it's something that if folks want to do it, if folks want to be on a bike patrol or something like that, or if folks really want to do e-bike, but like, it's kind of, Sean, do you want to maybe speak to how that works or?
So right now, we currently own two bicycles. Obviously during warmer months, when we have appropriate amount of staffing on day shift and into the afternoon shift, we'll use our bicycle patrols. We're getting closer to being at, you know, the allotted number for our full strength. We're not there yet last year. I would say that our bicycle patrols were down from previous years because of our staffing issues that we were having. I would be interested in purchasing more bicycles and putting more people out on bicycles if that's something that you, you as a council would be interested in. I think it's been a great tool for getting out into the community, specifically in the downtown area, interacting with people. And really what we're focusing on in those situations is education and just community outreach, not much from an enforcement standpoint, but more education and just getting out and getting in touch with the business owners and people in the downtown area. And responding to some calls in the downtown area, they don't generally leave pretty much the Prairie Street to probably Van Norwick area.
Anything else on this section? All right, so I think we have some clear direction there on top priorities for that area. All righty, next to safety and wellbeing. For Batavia, safety and wellbeing are vital. Through thoughtful and intentional planning design, we aim for zero traffic fatalities and serious injuries. Residents are safe, cared for and confident in their community's ability to ensure their security no matter what affects us. We provide robust support for our first responders and staff, allowing them to keep everyone safe. So I want to talk about one thing first, the bike and pedestrian policy. This is not, this is kind of designed to incorporate traffic calming measures. The idea is, is that we take existing guidance, we're not changing that or using that, they just came out with a new MUTCD and all these things, but try to identify what are things within there that we can do that are designated traffic calming measures. Now ultimately, they tend to be more expensive. So that's something we need to consider as we move forward on projects, as we redo roads and build sidewalks and all of that is, we can incorporate traffic calming measures and we can set out a policy that we're going to be very strong in doing these things, but understanding that when we present projects or do things, there's benefits of traffic calming and road safety and all these things, but it also potentially increased cost of projects. There's trade offs and that's ultimately where, that's a policy decision at the city council is where do you kind of think about that? And that's something that we can bring forward potentially as a conversation, like what actually does that policy look like or what is that? But that's kind of designed to incorporate any traffic calming measures that would be in this plan. And then secondly, when we did our research on where accidents happen, where people are tragically getting hit by cars or having incidents, we found that a lot of them happened to be in the downtown area. Why is that? Is there things we can do? Are there issues that we have that are exacerbating the current situation? That's kind of what the downtown safety study is designed to get at, less at like public safety and more movement of people and whatnot. So first things first, I'm glad to see this, is update emergency preparedness materials and start regular tabletop exercises. I'm, I'm happy to see that up at the top, measuring safety perception, qualtrics, implementing the fire department strategic plan. Also happy to see implement a comprehensive mental health training program, downtown safety study, crime reporting tool, potential work remote expansion, the bike and pedestrian design policy that I just talked about, education programs with the active transportation commission and then a rental inspection program. Thoughts, comments, questions?
Max?
Yeah.
I, I really think the, the, the mental health training, I think that needs to be bumped up just a little bit because I think that that is extremely important for a lot of the departments that we have, you know, that deal with things on a daily basis that they need help with. And I know that, you know, things that we've done in the past, things that we're planning to do are there, but I think that that to me is more of a priority than, say, what is it, fourth down now? I just feel like that's something off the, right off the bat that we really need to go after.
And yeah, I, so where would you slot that in then, Alan?
I don't know, if I had my way, it would be number one, but I, you know, in, in the top two, I would be fine, two or three, somewhere in there just a little bit higher than it is, because I think it is, it is a priority to me that that be part of us moving forward.
And is the other in the top two consensus wise, update emergency preparedness materials and start regular tabletops with regard to those so that we are prepared in the event of, you know, any emergency that comes our way, including looking to coordinate with our other communities and with King County.
You also want to add, one of the things we really want to do as part of this is cybersecurity preparedness, develop a cybersecurity plan and all these other things as well. It kind of gets to some of the things that folks have been asking for is to allow us to have some time and resources to be able to develop these sorts of plans. So that's just something that falls within emergency preparedness that we're cognizant of, that that includes cybersecurity, you know, God forbid something happens, you know, we can't access computers for, this, I mean, it's happened to towns and to schools and government units all over the place and it's not something I know our IT team works daily on to try to handle and get and deal with, but it's something we'd like to expand and especially develop some planning around that.
Black in knowledge or qualtrics, but for measure community safety perception, I'm number one surprised to see that so high if I'm, I guess clarification on what we mean by safety in this, in this regard, is that-
Yeah, the, there's, there's two components to this. One is there's the data we have about crime in a community, rather low, that often does not align to how safe people actually feel. And both are important. If someone doesn't feel safe in their community, but you just say, well, our crime is down, our crime is down, like there's a disconnect there. What make, like are there things that we could be doing differently that truly do make people feel safe? That-
Example would be, I, like if someone doesn't feel like an area that they want to walk at night is poorly lighted, they'd say, I don't feel safe there, even if nothing has happened there.
Understood. So if I understand this correctly, today, there's an overall perception that we possibly aren't safe?
No, based on our community survey, it was ranked extremely high, but you know, we, we want to dig deeper into that.
And this also-
People feel like they live in a safe community. Maybe they feel like they live in a safe community because our crime statistics are low, but they wouldn't necessarily want to go for a walk in our downtown at night because it's a downtown at night.
We don't know, and that's why the community survey is great, because it provide, the community survey tells us like, we're already doing very well, we're at like a B, B plus A in most of everything. How do we get to an A plus? That's kind of what this is designed to get, it is, how do we close that last gap if there doesn't set, don't feel safe, don't feel secure. Are there equity issues there? Is it certain populated, like are there certain, like these are all things that we can consider so that, you know, we inform our decision-making, inform our policing and community engagement initiatives, build trust, build relationships. That's kind of what this gets at. It informs us as, all right, we, we have terrific community safety perception, people think they're safe, they're welcome, they're supported, they're not fearful of anything. It's great, we hope that's the case. If we find that there's instances or situations in aggregate that aren't, well then we can take action, make changes, do things differently to try to address those things, re-measure and see whether or not what we did made an impact on those safety.
Just to add on that, I, I agree with Alan on the mental health, I would swap the qualtrics and the mental health from two to four.
Okay. So keep fire departments strategic plan where it is-
That's just my opinion.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I think that might be, that's a fascinating, and we're, the thing is with the community safety perceptions, that's going to be part of our broad community pulse survey that we're going to be working on. I'll have more updates on that for you in a little bit, not tonight, but at a future meeting, but that's kind of embedded in there.
Are those the four priorities? Yes.
I would like to see the bike and pedestrian design policy worked up into the top four as well.
Next?
I don't see that kind of, I think that-
Just a quick pace check, we're about an hour and a half into the discussion, are we, are we where you would like us to be?
Yeah, we're going to, I'm going to, now we're in a groove, we're going to kind of hopefully keep this moving as well. So I'm, my goal is to still get out of here at a reasonable hour, obviously. Okay, so where would you like to slot in that?
Well, we're already going to implement the fire department strategic plan, right? That's kind of a separate plan, so then if you just bump that out of this list, then I would put the bike and pedestrian design policy up.
I don't necessarily think that we have to do one, two, three, four, you know, I think it's like though, of the grouping-
Right, there's nothing I would remove, this is a really strong list.
Because like I said, it's not like we're going to be doing them sequentially. We're going to be working the list, but we're going to say, if we have to decide between something else on the list and something that you've identified as a priority, we're going to do the priority project.
We already have a down, or a pedestrian and cycling plan. I think without the design policy to go alongside it, that becomes a much weaker plan. So I think those two have to be implemented side by side.
Yeah, I think especially, yeah, it dovetails nicely with the downtown safety issue. Honestly, they're kind of co, you know, co-combined a little bit in a way, depending on what the safety issues are.
Alan has his hand up.
Yeah, I was just going to agree with Abby. I think that this is something that, you know, it's going to come down to what we as the council members decide we're going to fund and how we're going to push those things forward. So if we identify it as a, you know, a top two or a top three or a top four, whatever that might be, it really all is going to come down to what we end up saying yes to when it comes to the dollars and cents to get something done that we have to pay for. So I think that that's going to be really important for us to remember as we prioritize these, we may take one of them that's six or seven down and say, hey, this has to happen now because we need to do this as we're redoing this section of town, or we're redoing this road or realigning how we have a corridor set up, that, you know, that will become very important for us to remember that these are all plans and we have to pick the parts of the plan at the time that we can afford to fund them.
So next we'll move on to effective governance and service delivery. Batavia optimizes city services and creates efficient government that allows easy engagement with city services and staff. By investing in the use of data, technology and innovative practices, we identify and address issues promptly, communicate our actions clearly and provide transparency on how funds are spent to achieve Batavia's vision. And so this is a lot of them, this was probably the most intensive section among all of them because we had, we combined the IT and innovation section into this because we felt they kind of had enough overlap. I do want to spend a little bit of time talking about the organizational capacity study that was rated lower down. And ultimately, it's a trade off. On one hand, we kind of do present to you, when we present staffing or within the budget, that's kind of essentially us doing our own study, like we identified this need, we bring someone, we bring a position forward because we've identified that need. We can also do a comprehensive look at that, provide a roadmap for future hiring, but that kind of study potentially costs additional funding. That's something to weigh and consider is, is that something we kind of want to continue to do the way we've been doing it with regard to hiring and adding staff? Or is there a desire for a more comprehensive plan for that, but understanding that a study in that manner may be costly and time consuming. It's, it's a trade off ultimately into how you all think as council, you want to be seeing these positions brought up over time. And second of all, with regard to AI working group, we do intend to adopt some best practices. We do have staff, I mean, we, we know staff are using AI in many ways, some ethical practices, some considerations like, don't put confidential information into ChatGPT, that's not a good thing to do or anything like that, you know, writing for a letter or something like that, totally acceptable, but be mindful of what we're doing and some, some things like that. And I will zoom in, so this goes in order of expand online permits to all options, mobile friendly technology standard, which is designed that any technology we're using should be able to be interacted via mobile technology, field-based mobile devices, continue mapping city utilities for our GIS folks, explore data centralization efforts, data analysis trainings, video-based on-demand training hub, public engagement programs, senior citizen communications efforts, application study slash audit, organizational capacity study, SharePoint Intranet, lunch and learn board trainings, onboarding process, low, no fee organizational capacity study, SharePoint Intranet, lunch and learn board trainings, onboarding process, low no fee payments and AI working group. Thoughts?
If you guys don't like lunch and learns, I love lunch and learns. And board trainings too, I would love more.
We're, we're gonna have some of that at the retreat, I think, because we're gonna probably have some, that's kind of some of that there, but, thoughts? A lot of this gets to technological stuff and all of that and building out our digital government services. So, you know, understanding that, that, that is extremely resource intensive to upgrade systems, to bring us forward and drag us kind of into, you know, continue to evolve how we provide digital government to people. It's extremely resource intensive, especially on staff time to digitize processes, to update things. So do just be mindful of that. That's why some positions have been brought, like, with, in mind, there have been positions brought forward that are designed to free up capacity to be able to work on some of these things like online permits, mobile technology, expanding devices, mapping, like, all these things are kind of tied to some of those things that you've seen brought before you. So are there any thoughts, comments? You know, yeah.
One question and one thought. I think this is a complicated one for us to kind of evaluate because it's so internal. And it's like, well, I don't know what's best for, you know,
I was gonna say, you know, two of them that are on here, like continue mapping city utilities and expand field-based mobile devices, that really has to do with employees saying, I could do my job much better if these two things were, and you wouldn't necessarily be able to know that.
So this is almost one where I'm like, I just trust our department heads to kind of tell us where the priorities are. And then we say, okay, this is what you think, then this is what we go with. But one quick question, can you please explain the expand low no fee payment options?
So this is something that we talked about. Ultimately, we don't really currently, I don't think we currently have any, like, the idea is if there are payments, someone has to make with the city in interaction, you know? I have to pay a bill, I have to pay a permit fee or something that, to the extent we're able to, you know, not covering people's like credit card rewards, but is there an option that is fee free? That is just, you have a $30 bill, you pay a $30 payment. There's no, and that's the case for most, if not all of our things. That's something to keep in mind as we move forward if we have additional payments or things, if we're operating systems or whatever, that that remains the case. But my understanding is right now, we don't necessarily have anything that has a substantial fee attached unless someone chooses to use like a credit card, but that's not something we have to,
We're never gonna see that because,
Well, you have to work hard.
Inner, inner, the intercharge fees between banks and merchants and processors. I mean, I think until there's no fees there, there's going to be, there's always going to be fees with credit.
As long as we have ACH as an option though, and we market that, everyone knows that.
That's my understanding. That, that would be the goal is to,
You don't avoid it.
Yeah, those types of things that are, you know, direct bank to bank, there's no fee involved, making sure that those are available for as many transactions as possible.
I would rather get the points for my hotels though.
But it's nice doing the ACH. Well, I'm kind of viewing this as, is this an example of a situation where we can view people who are outside the general population? Who might take advantage of, like, this would be very beneficial for them. I'm thinking of like senior citizens who are on fixed income, maybe people with lower income values.
I mean, our current situation is most, if not all of our payments can be made fee free. If you choose to use a points credit card and you get points for paying your electric bill, that's not something the city really is going to in any way subsidize or cover. That's not the intent behind this.
There's some confusion on the website or confusion regarding signing up for an automatic payment where it looked like you had to pay a fee. The truth was, had you given us your account number and your routing number, it would be free. It's just some of the language we use in our communications, that's all.
Excellent. Just a couple of experiences I've had rather recently. I spoke at both the Homestead and Heritage Woods. And the line I get from, I've heard it in both places, that people, the folks are saying, well, I graduated from high school before 1970, and in that period of time, I never saw a computer in any school classroom I was ever in. And now you've turned this whole place into a technological field here, and we're kind of stumbling around and not knowing what's going on. And then the other thing that seems to raise its head out there is where you service yourself with all this technology. And what's really the last couple of weeks is got Batavia kind of up in the, in the fever is Homestead's has got their, their going out of business sign just because they've been there for 77 years in Gene's retirement time, and he doesn't have anybody to replace him, so he's shutting the place down. Well, Gene Homestead for a long time was the answer to a lot of these people. When they wanted to buy a TV or a stereo or a radio or a computer, they'd go to Gene and Gene would, maybe they bought it someplace else, but Gene would many times go over to their house and install it for them. And I've already heard, my God, what's Batavia gonna do now we don't have Gene Homestead to deal with installation of all the technology? And I mean, I think that's a real issue that's out there, that there's, there's a whole secondhand world to this stuff. Yeah, you buy the TV or the computer or the screen or whatever you're getting, but then getting somebody in your house to take it out of the box and set it up and install it and show you how to work it, that's a whole different profession. If I was a young guy and I had a lot of computer smarts, I think I'd go up and run Homestead's and put a sign on there, technology services, because I mean, there's a lot of people that seemingly need those.
So two points to that. One, that's an equity issue, that access to services, that yes, we may be moving in a more tech-focused direction with online services. That's where most of our residents are coming from most likely. But we do have sets of residents who don't interact with city services, who still like to come in person, pay their bill, pay their bill. Those will be kept. But it's trying to provide as many options and as efficient options as possible to all of our residents. If you want to pay your electric bill just from your phone and you don't want to have to show up to City Hall, you've, you've lived here for 20 years and you don't even want to come here, like, that, that is, that, that option should exist for folks. But we also, you know, that, that's why we are expanding senior citizen communication efforts. Understanding if we do something that, you know, we're making sure it's inclusive. We also know from our community survey, you know, we, we surveyed, I think it was 96% of our residents at least use computers on a daily basis or access city services from computers. So we're already moving in that direction. Our citizens are kind of pushing us that direction. And as we continue to move forward over the next five years, that, that, the, the tech demand from our population is probably going to continue to grow with regard to digital governments and act, and working with us and,
I just think that's an object that should be on this list for consideration.
Yeah, I think we do have one in the area of communications with seniors.
For sure.
So in terms of identifying consensus on this particular area, would it be fair to say that to go with those first four? But then I would say, based on our senior staff discussions, that you may also see us earlier rather than later, looking at application study or audit, which we think is very important in terms of the tools people use to do their jobs. And then the second is the organizational capacity study to have a discussion about how we would approach that because we certainly need to be doing long-range headcount planning.
Okay. I have to do this every time, aren't I? All right, economic development and local business support. Batavia is a beacon for economic growth, inspiring new businesses to establish themselves here and for existing businesses to grow here. We prioritize and support small and local businesses, fostering an environment that encourages entrepreneurship and prosperity. So with regard to centralized parking, parking garages cost money. That's something that, the idea there would be to take lots and consolidate them into parking garages. It's something to consider. It frees up more space for development, but it also is substantially more expensive to build a garage in a surface lot. That's just something to consider, but the first thing you'll see on here is a CED strategic plan that is actually going to be revised and was meant to be just economic development strategic plan, more how we do economic development and build that within the city. The grant programs is designed to understand if we have grant programs, how effective are they in achieving what we want to do? You know, if we're giving out, you know, money to folks to, to improve their business, are we, are we seeing that that's an effective way to support a business or are there better ways to do that? Gaps in amenities, you know, things we talked about hotels, data centers, things that could exist or there potentially is a market for, just making a concerted effort to try to get those here. The Business Pulse Survey is a regular survey that would go out via Qualtrics to our business community to understand what their needs, wants, issues may be. Making sure that we're promoting what programs we have that help businesses, things like proactive fire inspections, walkthroughs, like, we have a whole host of services that we can do and just making sure that folks are aware of those. You know, if there's things that come up, you know, resident ideas and whatnot, just making sure that we're working with our partners to make sure them happen. And then some of the lower down priorities were things like public restrooms. Grant writing workshops is designed to be more like, if there's a, like, for example, when PPP came out, if we have a bunch of businesses that are all eligible, we want to make sure that they get as much money from someone else as possible. And if we can provide like, hey, just come out, we're going to teach you how to fill out this form, walk you through it, and you're going to get your money from the state or from the federal government. That's something we want to do to be supporting our businesses. And that's kind of on a as needed potentially basis if things come up. The development marketing campaign would be more for like, if we have specific properties we're trying to develop, that that would be funding that and supporting, you know, this is a specific site, we're trying to get a specific type of development to come here. Whether that's a marketing campaign initiative, reaching out to people, trying to recruit, there's that. And then we kind of already do this, we try to prioritize local sourcing when we're buying stuff, local businesses, local materials if we can. But that's kind of something that we're already doing. It's not a formal policy, but I know when we do purchasing of stuff, that that's a consideration.
How do you feel about those top three?
I want to say the most intriguing one is the fourth one. I mean, where it's four and there's such a wide variance. To make it where it's that hot up.
Yeah.
It's, it's a fair point. I mean, and, you know, from our conversations, it's like, one, the market will build it if it's the desired thing or if there's a market for a hotel or a market for a data center.
Maybe it's like that because it's, it's semi-broad, right? You know, some people might have taken it one way, some people might have taken it another way in terms of, okay, what amenities and services are we talking about or, you know?
It's something that Anthony's doing. You know, I, he looks at the spectrum of what types of businesses that we have and tries to identify gaps and reach out to businesses that are in that lane.
Rex, can you zoom that screen just a little bit?
Yes, I can.
I would comment regarding gaps, that it's not just a like comprehensive gap of things in Batavia as a whole, but also it's a locational thing. There are parts of our town that have no like, you know, useful businesses anywhere near them, like a small grocery store or something, convenience, anything like that. That has a lot of, you know, trickle down problems with it regarding required infrastructure to get to those places or just time of your life you have to spend getting those places. That could lead to quality of life issues. So it's, it's not just a matter of do we have these in town, but where in town, I would argue.
That's exactly, I mean, that's kind of what another component of that is, is, you know, are there things that are needed for daily life that you have? If, if someone has to do something on a daily basis and their only option to do that is to head to Geneva or St. Charles or North Aurora, like, that, that's stuff that could be here and for, and through our city and through our, you know, resources and all that. That, that's kind of the gist behind that is if that, not everything, but you know, are there certain things that like, you know, we can support? It's good, it benefits our community trying to get them here and recruiting them, you know, with our, you know, economic development folks and whatnot. Yeah.
About the Business Pulse Survey, is that with our businesses downtown?
That would be to all of our, it would be to all, we would invite people who are business owners or people involved in businesses to sign up, but it's an option to build that relationship. You know, people can identify issues, it's like, hey, I'm really struggling with a permit or I'm really struggling with, you know, I'm, I'm not understanding what this program is or how this works. We can proactively address those issues and work with them, but also, you know, do you expect to invest more in your business over the next 12 months? Has your sales over the last 12 months gone up or down? Like, there are things that we can ask to inform our long-range planning, but also inform, are we, like, are the programs and stuff we have that support our businesses aligning with what they're telling us in our surveys and with our data?
These aren't, we can model our program off of existing programs too, that if, if they have had good success with theirs,
And that's the intent is,
highest form of flattery, right?
Again, I'm just wondering, you know, when you do that pulse of the survey, you know, if there, the question could be put in there, like, do you see gaps or amenities in Batavia? And then also have that question on the community survey.
Right.
And then that way between the community and the business and then Anthony's expertise, you know, that would help identify some of that.
Like, we can go to a business and,
So I don't know if I would say that that would be, you know, that high up. I would rather see some of these other programs.
Kind of gets incorporated and others that are on the list.
That's something I know we're gonna work on anyway. Like, it's not, it's one of our, not low, like, it takes some work, but you know, there's existing models out there. We're, we're planning on talking about that in the next couple of weeks with community and economic development folks to kind of see what things we would be measuring and considering. But that's one of the reasons we went ahead and got Qualtrics is because we had this in mind as something we wanted to do.
Maybe promoting programs that help businesses, I think should continue to be a pro, a high priority for Batavia.
Yeah.
It's just not that difficult to do. You know what I mean? It is a higher priority, it's not difficult for us to do that.
The centralized downtown parking, I like where that is. And I like, I would like to see downtown public restrooms continue to be a feasibility discussion. And somewhere between the promoting programs and the sharing innovative ideas with Main Street, in terms of our downtown specifically, this is not a fully formed thought yet that I'm trying to draft here as I say it aloud. But there's, I think there's just more that we could be doing with the partners that we have, Main Street particularly. They've been doing an awesome job. We've seen a lot of growth and expansion of our downtown businesses, and they've been operating with the exact same budget pretty much for the back 10, 15 years.
Actually, their budget has greatly expanded over the years.
That we've contributed?
No, not from the city.
Not from the city, okay.
Right.
And there are models and other economic development and partnership, private, public partnerships that exist out there. And we've had, we had a really great field trip out to Berwind to see how they do it. So I would like to see, and that's kind of like a low, I would hope, you know, investment that we can start to discuss.
Perhaps that makes its way into an economic development strategic plan, which is at the very top of our list.
A working groups and other committees.
And that's, I think that's probably some of the things that this will get at is like, how do we work with our partners to bring new businesses and all of that? So that's, even though it's like lower down, it's tied to probably what will be incorporated into the economic development strategic plan.
That's what I was gonna say, I really like that, the, that development, that, that strategic plan is right at the top because I do feel like so many of these other things kind of will fall, cascade down from that, so.
The rest of it is just a, a priority list for that plan, you know? It's like everything is bullet pointed over under that, so. Yeah.
Also in this section, I think we have some consensus there as well. Alrighty, so community engagement inclusion, we're getting toward the end. Batavia is a city where everyone works together. This means the community, city council and city staff work together as a unified team, building strong relationships based on mutual respect and support. We ensure that our city staff and elected officials reflect the diverse makeup of our community. And so with regard to this, there's a couple of things. So like, something like the standard city council template and equity impact analysis tool. We know the benefits of doing those things, so we still obviously intend to do those. And that's something that we're going to talk more about at the retreat is kind of what, what that looks like and what kind of things you need. Like, you as council members want to see in memo, in memos and that we're kind of being consistent and that we're making sure that, you know, if you want this information, like, we're getting that you every time we, we present something to you. We're just going to rephrase field trips a little bit to make it a little more formal. It's still the concept of if we have a specific project or idea that we're trying to do, not, not just a broad, open-ended, let's go somewhere to go somewhere, but like, we have a specific location with specific criteria and we're trying to do a specific thing and we saw a specific community do something, we take a small group, how do they do it? What do they fund it with? It's not, let's send all 14, like, that's not the idea behind it.
And I think in the draft plan, you've said, provide opportunities for city personnel and elected officials to visit other places that have successfully solved similar problems, gaining insights and best practices that can be applied locally. That's what that field trip is.
Benchmarking trips.
Exactly. So first things first, expand employee recognition efforts, expand homeowner and training programs and common code or permit issues, just making sure that folks are aware, like, don't dig without calling Julie, you'll hit a gas or line, that's not a good thing. The community-oriented police law officer and comfort dog, that's in our budget for this year, so that's more or less done, or will be done probably shortly in the year. Field trips, and then expanding, evaluate opportunities for external meeting participation. Like, some of these things aren't that intensive, so, those are all kind of things we're hoping to do, and then the childcare pilot program is down the list, that's something that, you know, if we have time or something like that, we'll look into, but it's not something that had all that much broad support at this stage.
Expand it again. Thanks.
I like the care pilot program, I wonder if people were maybe thinking that it'd be a more involved process than it would otherwise be?
The, yes, but also it's a question of, is that something we should be providing? Or should, is that something we should be in the more or less business of providing to people, or even supporting that? And it's something that, you know, it's, there's, as you can see, there's difference of opinion on it, and it's something that is a lower down priority.
I wonder theoretically, we could at least provide a space, and then if there are a lot of parents in, have, you know, two of them maybe sit, honestly, the alderman room, which we don't really use ever?
Maybe on like an ad hoc potential, like, if there's something, we can think about it, if there's, but it's not something that we're probably going to implement in a broad scale, like, every city council meeting would have this option.
Right.
And so that's-
Like a cry room option effectively.
Sure.
Which, for kids, not for us.
Well, I go back there and cry all the time.
Okay, anything else on this section? I think-
Excellent.
Yeah, sorry.
One quick comment, I personally would like to see the implement an equity impact analysis tool and standard city council memo template come up a little bit more.
Yeah.
I do think that that would be beneficial.
Explain that one a little bit more?
So, yeah, two things. One, the equity impact analysis tool is based on something that in a prior work or position I had at the State Board of Education, we developed an equity impact analysis tool. The thought is, how many decisions do we as staff and a team make on a daily basis that affect people? Thousands and thousands of decisions. Are we being caught, it's a set of six simple questions we ask ourselves, like, what is the outcome we're trying to achieve? Who was involved? What does the data say? How are we measuring accountability and success? And we'll present, we'll talk about that at the retreat, but it's really just a set of six simple questions that we ask ourselves to make sure we're including the people who need to be included, that we're, you know, considering data, that we have clear outcomes, that we have clear ways we're measuring our success, and it kind of walks you through a process that forces you to just ask yourself these questions, like, oh wait, I didn't include anyone from the community on this issue, like, I need to go back and reconsider, like, that was something I probably should have done, that could have impacted the ultimate decision being made. That's kind of where that comes from, it's just, it's a set of six pretty simple questions. I can share that around, but it's designed to be not super time-intensive, but if you catch yourself like, I don't have a clear outcome on this, I need to kind of go back and rethink about it. So it's designed to make better decisions when we're making thousands of decisions on a daily basis, just to think about. The standard city council memo template would be, you know, you guys always want the financial implications of an item, we make sure, you know, this is budgeted at this line item, or this is, this does not have any financial implications, or, you know, you want to see any prior ordinances that address this issue, and, like, there are things that we can include that, as you make decisions, that the memos you're receiving are as consistent and contain the information you need from us to be able to make decisions you want to make. So we'll talk about that more at the retreat, that's one of our conversations we're going to have, is, what does that look like? What information do you all feel you need as council members to make the decisions that you make?
The initial concern was, was there editorializing in the staff memo if they were pushing us in a certain direction? So that kind of thing didn't happen anymore, and there were solid metrics on, is it going to cost more money? How much staff time did you just ask us to take up by the thing that you just quickly voted yes on? All of those things are consistent now.
Wendy has a comment.
I just wanted to say something also in regards to the equity impact analysis, also kind of looking at the decisions that are made at the city council level, and also at the city level from a policy perspective, is are we applying that equity lens? And sometimes they're made maybe even not meaningful, and they're systematic, like, the decisions that we are making, are we affecting or leaving out a particular group of people by that decision? And so hopefully with that, and asking of those questions, we can make sure that we're making the best decisions for all of our citizens and all of our employees.
It's designed to be a check on ourselves as well, so we check ourselves and go, alright, did we do what we actually want to be doing in this regard?
I'm really excited for that conversation at the retreat, because, yeah, like Chris Low here last night said, you know, you look around and see who's not at the table, like, we represent a very broad swath, and we are a very diverse in our own ways group up here, but we are lacking some voices at the table, and we need to be cognizant of that when we're making policy, and identifying who's the most vulnerable in our community, and making sure that we are, that they're being heard, that their voice is being heard.
That's a specific question on there, is who was at the table, who wasn't at the table in making this decision? So, right on. Yeah, Tim.
Yeah, I mean, listen, I think, you know, sometimes we can go down a path of, you know, putting people in categories, like, you know, there's a reason I asked the question before of, you know, so if someone, you know, for exactly what Wendy just said, if someone, you know, comes in here, and because in the workforce, they don't agree with an initiative of diversity, equity, and inclusion, not because they don't want a diverse workforce, but because they believe in a different way of hiring people based on merit, that alienates a group of people as well. So I think we just need to be careful, and then I'm looking up census data, you know, we say we want, we want it to reflect our community, well, if we look at the census data, guys, our community is very white. So, and I'm not saying that, like, we don't want other representation, I'm just saying we need to be careful of what we're talking about, I mean, what are we looking for here?
And we want our workforce to be more diverse.
Sure, absolutely. We might want that, but how, and that's why sometimes I have a tough time with the word equity, because that is determining an outcome. We can't determine outcomes for people, we can't determine outcomes for anything.
It actually isn't determining the outcome, it's looking at where people start from, and what the system provides.
Can I make a comment really quick?
So, yeah, go ahead, Anna.
I just want to make a comment, this isn't about race-specific, and I feel like that's where you're taking it.
I feel like that-
Let me just finish my comment. So, this, I mean, this is even when we're talking about, like, street crossings, you know, we need to be thinking about people with disabilities.
Right.
Like, so this is like a whole span of people, and a whole, it's a much broader conversation when we're using these terms, we're talking about senior citizens.
Okay, but what does that mean? So we want more, like, you know, people who are disabled working, I mean, I don't know what, where those lie in terms of-
Need to be listening to their voices.
Of course, but-
Yeah, that's what we're saying. That's all.
A lot of it's perspectives, getting-
Sure, absolutely.
Maybe things that we're going to miss, there's a lot I'm going to miss.
No question, I don't want it to come off like, that's what, but I think it needs to be said as another viewpoint, that sometimes it can be, you know, that can be seen from different lenses, right? You know, of course we want everyone, everyone should want everyone's opinion, I mean, that's a, you know, in our position anyway, right? So, and yeah, you know, of course I would love everything to be more diverse, I love diversity, I love, you know, different cultures, different backgrounds, different points of view, whatever, that makes the decision better, we put more facts on the table. That being said, we can't determine those things for people, like, you know, people have to come here, we can put tools in place and things like that, but I think we need to be careful with the line we draw there. And I think, you know, some of those, you know, the question for me on hiring employees, that's where sometimes, like, I draw the line, it's like, wait a minute, that's, in my opinion, that's, that's asking, if you ask them, do you, you know, you would have to make it very specific to say, do you disagree with a workforce that is diverse? Or would you not work in a place that has diverse, you know, men, women, people of all race, creed, color, whatever? You know, that's one thing, but, you know, when it's, when it's put out there, and we all know DEI is a political hot topic, so when people hear that in an interview, they're immediately going to get triggered in one way or the other, right? So I think it's just, it's something to talk about, it's something to keep on the board as a discussion of just how we word some of these things.
I always try to phrase it in the context of service delivery. We provide services to 26,000-plus people, that's 26,000 diverse, unique individuals. You know, we have to make sure that, you know, the way I've explained it, I talked to a fire, like, in talking to a fire department, it's like, let's think about this example, someone who, you know, if you call an ambulance, there's a payment potentially for calling that ambulance. If someone's having a stroke but doesn't have health insurance, how much of an impact do those 10 minutes matter while they're contemplating whether or not I need to call 911 for the outcome of being safe, getting to the hospital on time, and surviving? The goal there of our fire department is, we try to provide the best possible care. If this is a barrier that prevents us to providing the best, I'm not saying that's something that we might get, it's an example, that there may be barriers in place that first make interacting or getting city services substantially more difficult, or have trouble in a way that we don't ever want them to have to have. There's tools, there's things we can do, and then the idea is, we make decisions as well for 26,000 people. Who was at the table in making those decisions? Are the people who are affected by the decisions we made included in the conversation? If not, then we're making decisions for people without people. That's kind of what this gets at. It gets at, we provide services for 26,000 people that are unique and individual, and that when there are times that we have to provide, like, you have to be able to pay a utility, you have to be able to access police and fire services, those are things where the outcome may be dependent on, like, if you, if you are deaf or something like that, and you can't, or you have certain types of phones that you use, like, there are things that we need to make sure that we're including, that we're open, and that we're complying with laws, but we're also going above and beyond to make sure that they can interact as easily as anyone else with city services. That's kind of where this comes from.
Yeah, couldn't agree with that more, I mean, that's ADA and all that, and I know it's just an example, I'm just saying as an overall overarching, you know, I want the push for diversity. I just think, you know, it will happen organically with things that we put in place, I think we just need to be careful on some of these hot topics, and, you know, just-
I have a comment.
And I think it's worth being a good topic, I mean, we want our decisions to be made with the most, you know, the biggest dataset possible, I think you're phenomenal at this, that, Max, you know, so, yeah, I don't mean it by any means other than to say that, I got a little triggered with the hiring of our employees and stating that question, and then potentially, you know, right off the bat saying, you're out because you don't agree with this particular agenda, you know? I think that's, well, that was asked, if we're going to, you know, if we're going to ask or not, if they say no, what would the general response be?
So the example that I used was my own work experience, so I work for a land trust, an environmental land trust. So the question in my interview process was something super vague, like, how does inclusion inner, you know, but, kind of just, it was a discussion, you know? Tell me about, you know, what you think in terms of inclusion in the environmental or land conservation space? It was super broad. It was mostly, and we've asked it followed up, you know, to say, kind of, is this person thinking about it? Is this person valuing it? If they tell us they don't care, they don't think that the two are interconnected, then it was, we knew that it would not be a culture fit. I think that there is a-
Because in your guys' mind, they were wrong, right?
Yeah, we value inclusion.
We value inclusion.
So if somebody were to say, I don't value inclusion-
If they don't value inclusion.
Then they're not going to fit in well at the city of Batavia.
Okay, maybe that came out wrong. I'm basically saying, let's just be careful how we word it, because it will trigger people, and that's not a good thing. You don't want to be triggered in either way of saying, oh, someone's pushing some political agenda in one way or the other. No, you're coming to work for a public entity, a city, you know?
Yeah, and we, like, you know, Max talks about it in terms of providing, a service provider from a staff's perspective. As a resident, as a neighbor, you know, I'm thinking about my town and trying to foster this feeling of belonging for everybody, regardless of who they are, where they're from, or what they do, or what they can and can't do, and all the things, right? And if a certain member of a marginalized community, and members of marginalized communities in our town have told me they don't necessarily feel a sense of belonging here in the city of Batavia, and there are things that we can do to improve that sense of belonging for certain groups, and when we hear that, we have to then be mindful of how we present ourselves as a city, the type of folks that are representing us, and on our payroll that we are providing a, you know, a livelihood to, if they're projecting something that is turning off a certain person or group, that is something that is of our concern. And I think if something, maybe my example, it was not worded, it was worded too triggering, but I think that we, and I think, I think the whole inclusion process is just an education and an empathy and a curiosity place, right? You know, just to learn, what is that perspective of someone from group A, B, and C that's not represented at this table? And just learning from them and hearing them, so I think that's really all that we're trying to get at with these things.
Yeah, okay.
I think we already talked about this, like, two times ago, and I think that we've already discussed, like Max said, anything will be run by us, because I already voiced my concern about triggering and everything like that, now Wendy already had appropriate questions, and we had this discussion in the last context, let's keep on rolling, it's 9:15.
Got one more outcome, but I think that's a good point, is that-
But I think that you've already discussed how it's going to come back to us anyway, and so we'll make sure-
Create a plan, evaluate-
We don't have triggering issues, and we make sure it's appropriate and importantly legal.
Of course.
Okay.
All right. So last but not least, we will move on to regional connectivity and transportation. Batavia is regionally connected through multiple transportation options, including active transportation and transit. We work with regional partners to achieve seamless access and mobility throughout the tri-city region. And so, a bit of context on safer routes to schools, we've seen some pretty substantial changes in the criteria for what that means, and that as a funding source, long-term, may not be there in the amounts that we had hoped, so that, you know, there may be additional demands on city funds if we want to do this work long-term, as that funding source declines, if we want to continue, that kind of stuff, that that, like I said, that funding source may not be there. So the bike and ped plan is funded, but if there's any additional initiatives beyond what is in there, that doesn't currently have a funding source, and that's something that council would need to consider, if that's, if there's a desire to expand and continue to grow that, that that's something that council needs to wrestle with. But with regard to this, there's evaluate safer routes to school, collect ridership and walking data to better form investment locations, basically if we're going to be building bike lanes or, you know, adding sidewalks, that we're kind of getting some data on the front end, like, is this where actually people are riding bikes, or are we just putting a bike lane somewhere that isn't that useful? You know, PACE is continuing to go through their planning process and make changes potentially to bus routes and whatnot, just continuing to advocate that we maintain, you know, routes that run through Batavia, that there's that access throughout the tri-city region. You know, implementing the bike-ped plan obviously is going to go underway, that's happening, but the idea of seeking potentially, if we want to do anything more than what's in there, that would have to come from funding increases from you all, and ultimately the silver level bike designation, there are things in there that we are trying to do, but, you know, some of the things in there kind of touch on expansion of bike-ped, if you guys wanted to do those things, like, again, it comes down to resources, it's, you know, we can expand bike infrastructure as much as the funding allows us to do.
For the, for the PACE buses, do we know when they're going to start implementing changes, or do they have a regional plan they're hoping to put through?
No, but we've got a really good resource for that, and the mayor who sits on the PACE board, so, we'll probably be one of the first communities to know when those changes are coming.
Anything else with regard to regional mobility and transportation, or regional transportation mobility?
Not a lot of variance on this one.
No, exactly. They're pretty tight.
Okay, so now we're going to move into the big-
Had a lot of variance on this one.
No, exactly. They're pretty tight.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we're going to move into the big picture section, and this is really where, there were some comments that the longer-term, bigger-picture items that we want to be cognizant of as we move into future plans and as we kind of move forward, are big strategic issues, things like the dam in the Fox River, that that's an issue that is somewhat addressed within the plan, but it nonetheless remains as something that we're continuing to wrestle with. You know, ultimately, service and revenue levels, that's kind of, some of the things we talked about, is ultimately, what levels of services do we provide and what levels of revenues are we collecting to provide those services? Economic development strategy, that kind of gets to the strategic plan, and then also long-term electric portfolio. Are there other issues, or what do we kind of think about some of these big picture items that we'll put in the plan as, like, we're still thinking about? Like, these are things that are on our radar, that we're cognizant of, that continue to be our issues, but they kind of fall within the comprehensive picture of what the plan seeks to address in a sense. Thoughts? Yeah.
If we could go back to the downtown plan and to the branding of neighborhoods, you know, where we talked about, I know that that's kind of a priority for you, Dustin, but I see that as, you know, something that could become a long-term plan of the branding of the areas once we kind of begin solidifying some of the downtown area.
You know, let's face it, that downtown plan is going to take more than five years to implement, so that downtown plan certainly is a long-term plan for us as well.
You could poo-poo me on that, so.
What's that?
No, I was just saying, Dustin.
Oh, Dustin's poo-pooing you on it?
No, I said he could if he wanted to.
The door's open. Would you like to?
I'm tired.
These are some, like I said, there's some of the big picture items that we continue long-term over the next 10, 20, 30 years to wrestle with.
They're not going to go away.
Of course not. That's, that's the idea. These are things that are never going to go away. I mean, the dam might go away, but that's, it's another.
So electric portfolio, is that more of the types of electric that we get within the community, or is that also preparing our community for the changes down the road?
Yeah, that's twofold. So it's like, initially, the energy infrastructure study is kind of the infrastructure side, but we know that we have Perry State Energy Campus, we can't do a whole lot at this current stage, but 20 years from now, we are probably going to be in a very different position. And that, that is something that we're cognizant of. We're not just saying, well, it's 20 years away, we're not dealing with it, or we're not even thinking about it, but we understand that this is further down the line, but we still need to be cognizant of it now, and that it's something that we think about, act on, that we're regularly thinking about things and looking for things, but today, there's not a whole lot we can do unfortunately in that regard. Yeah.
Something I wrote down, and it was one of the pages somewhere, was something about infill development. It was probably on the downtown plan at some point, but the service and revenue levels, kind of that broad statement, has me thinking about subdivisions, and I know Gary has mentioned it, Laura has mentioned it before, how, you know, we built these subdivisions, you know, kind of 60s, 70s, 80s, 90s subdivisions, and how they didn't necessarily sustain themselves in terms of revenue, that they don't, they don't independently pay for the infrastructure that they sit on, but we used future subdivisions to pay for past infrastructure that it sits on, right? And how, I had seen a, it was TikTok, about like, if you had, if you were selling oranges, and you were selling every bundle of oranges at a loss, and your, your strategy then was to sell more oranges, just cash flow-wise to, you know, eventually that comes to a head, right? So that, that service versus revenue and thinking just about the way we build and the way that we allow subdivisions to be built, we're going to run out of land to keep trying to catch up with ourselves eventually, so to make better investments so that we are not continuing to subsidize old growth with new development that we can't sustain forever.
I feel like we're going to have to start buying houses to create those subdivisions.
I don't think there's much land left anyway, I mean.
We're going to be building up, is what's going to happen. After we have.
There are still, there are still spots of land. We are discussing them. So they are still there, and so we can continue to chase that same development pattern, or we can start looking at some data in terms of what that's really doing long-term to our infrastructure.
We have tried to address and control it with land cash as best as we can. We made it, what, extra affordable for a while there, and then we did our best, because we were trying not to discourage development, but we knew it was not going to pay for itself.
So is there anything else anyone has? I know it's been a long, but I hope, very productive meeting. I think we've had good and difficult conversations, which is exactly what I hoped. And again, it's all in chasing of the same outcomes that we agree on, that that is the ultimate reason why we're doing this. How we get there, that's the conversation we're having, but the ultimate outcomes, we kind of understand that we want to take our community to this place and that this is the how as to we do it. So if nobody has anything else, I'm going to make some edits, come back to you, it'll be on a future cow agenda, and, you know, or maybe just, we'll, we'll come back to it and it'll be, you know, we won't have, obviously, a full discussion, but you'll see the changes that, changes, comments, issues that you brought up today reflected, some tweaks here and there. But I just want to thank you all for engaging with this, for sharing your views, for being as honest as you have been, that this process works best when we're honest, we talk about our strategic issues, we work through them, we open and talk about disagreements, that that's okay, but we do it with respect and candor. So just want to say thank you to all of you. I think this has been a great process, and we're looking forward to getting to work on this. There's a lot in here, but we have some direction today on guidance and prioritization, so thank you all.
Thanks, Max.
Are you keeping all of the, all of the nice papers that you have hanging around here from the summertime?
Uh.
Are they going in the presentation stuff? The permanent archive?
The permanent archive.
Pretty sure we have to retain those for document reasons.
Scan, it's pretty hard to scan those.
Don't worry.
The presentation, all this actually, the room.
You got a platter, it's huge.
Moving.
Can I get both of you adjourn?
Uh, moving on to other? Do we have any others?
I forgot, we had some formality here.